December, our Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for December 18, 2018. I call this meeting to order and again ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron.
Here.
Carbonero.
Here.
Deanie.
Here.
Gabrenia.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Brinkie, absent. President Wallace.
Here. First item on our committee meeting this evening is under Community and Economic Development Chairman Gabrenia.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item for our committee and that is to discuss a current concept for Bartlett Plaza which is under contract by petitioner Manny Rafidia. And there are a lot of moving parts to this, so I will defer if I would to Tony.
Thank you Chairman Gabrenia. Yes, a good way to describe it. A lot of moving parts. We've been working with petitioner Mr. Rafidia since early February of this year through several meetings and correspondences and a beta application as well that came before you a couple of months ago. And in a continuing effort to work with him while he pursues the purchase and redevelopment of Bartlett Plaza, he has sent a number of requests to staff and you can see in the committee packet tonight what prompted tonight's presentation is an email that he sent to Mayor Wallace and some staff on December 6th where he made a number of requests that we had spoken of in the past, but he put them in writing formally to the village for consideration. And yeah, I'm going to detail a couple of the moving parts of this because they pertain to both potential users of the former vacant grocery space in Bartlett Plaza that's been vacant for eight years now as of last month, as well as a few financial incentive requests that he has of the village board. So I'm going to kind of quickly go through this email with his requests, one of which was in terms of relief on permit fees for improvement and support from the village in terms of a Cook County property tax incentive that he intends to pursue, similar to a Class 6 that the village has done for industrial properties. This is called a Class 7, Class 7B specifically, and it pertains to commercial properties rather than industrial. It's something we've been investigating. Also relief on various permit fees. Building Director Brian Goralski had calculated that on a $2 million redevelopment project as he's proposed, the building permit fees would be approximately $24,000. I'm going to get to one of the slides, but also he has been working on potentially attracting a new outlot building as well, constructing a new building at Bartlett Plaza, about 20,000 square feet. I might as well go to that now. And that, the tap-on fees for that would be approximately $7,300. He has a request, I can go back to that, but he has a request to erect pylon, a pylon sign or perhaps multiple pylon signs on the property, similar to what he has at Cross Creek Commons here in Roselle nearby. And also he has a request, this one's a rather simple one, but he would want to rebrand it from Bartlett Plaza to the Streets of Bartlett. And now what I'm going to do is I'm going to backtrack again and what he has proposed to both staff and bringing before the committee tonight are a number of proposed uses for that former grocery space. It's 32,000 square feet. You can see he has depicted dividing the space up into four units. The largest of one, he calls a family clothing or entertainment center. I'm going to also show two additional slides that he just sent to us this afternoon that shows a little bit more detail on what the entertainment center would look like. He has an Arminetti's Beverage, a liquor store in his Roselle Shopping Center and I believe in some of his other shopping centers as well. So he shows that as a 4,150 square foot space that would become, again, in part of what is currently the vacant grocery store. Two other uses that he has proposed to us, quite interestingly, would be a restaurant called Fire and Ice that would feature wood-fired pizza and the ice component would be basically a serve yourself frozen yogurt type of concept. Also in that particular business, he would want to apply for a liquor license and also put in some of the video gaming machines into that unit. And then last but not least, he has depicted a hookah lounge on the property and we have cited to him along with Village Attorney Maraz, the state law that stipulates that a hookah lounge would have to be a freestanding unit if it's not grandfathered in, if it didn't exist already prior to the Illinois Smoke Free Act about 10 years ago. But I know Mr. Rafidia can comment on his thoughts about that. And then I'm also going to show now a couple of slides that were not in your packet, but we just received them this afternoon and we thought it would be a good idea to share it with you. This is some further detail on architectural plans and layout that he's just recently received on how he plans on subdividing the space, basically similar to the way I just described it with a restaurant, an Arminetti's Liquor Store, a large area with, I'm going to describe it as kind of an indoor kids' play type.
Tony, Tony, do you have a pointer? Can you point out what you're actually talking about on that screen?
We can't.
We can't see it.
The words are too small.
Okay. Do we have a pointer?
Where's Jim when you need him?
Yeah, Jim always used it. Towards the bottom of it, thank you. Scott will be my pointer.
Fire and Ice concept right here.
Okay, that's what we're.
Our self-serve ice.
Arminetti's to the left of where Scott was pointing.
All right.
So what streets are we, so that's Devon?
That's the area that would be facing Devon. It's currently a blank wall and his plans are to divide that up and to create the look of storefronts over there, to put in windows and doors and divide that space up fronting along Devon. And then a real interesting thing that he sent us this afternoon, I know it is hard to see it on this, but what this is, I can describe it as a children's activity and play center and was looking at it this afternoon. And again, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rafidia to describe it, but it includes a climbing wall there in the upper right-hand corner, some trampolines towards the back wall, a slide going into a ball pit, a massive jungle gym complex. So a nice kind of business to take children to when there's inclement weather or during nice weather for that matter, but a place for children to come and play. And as I mentioned, that's one of the uses that we've discussed doing in the past and he's had similar businesses to this over the years in some of his other centers. It's called Dyno Rex. So again, we've been working with Mr. Rafidia all, basically all year on this. So he sent this email requesting something called preapproval, but we described to him that these requests of his would still require special uses for some of the liquor licenses, possibly special use for a banquet facility. Should he build that on an outlot, a sign variance? And with that, I see him in the audience tonight. He brought his son Jeremy with him, who I understand would help run and operate one of the businesses in the center. And if you have any questions of us or Mr. Rafidia, we welcome them.
Are we saying the hookah lounge is out? That's no longer viable?
We've informed him of the state law pertaining to hookah lounges and we actually had a discussion about that today and yesterday. And I believe currently he has plans to actually put in a wall to separate the hookah lounge area. I think he could speak to that, but we have informed him that that is statewide law at this point.
Tony, can you go back to the other diagram? I'm having, we can't read any of the words from here. Can you tell us what each of those says and which way we're supposed to be oriented? Is this, is the left-hand side facing the parking lot?
Right, that would be.
What do each of those?
Colored.
What is the colored area? What do each of those four blocks, two rectangles and two smaller and a square up there, what do those say? I can't have a conversation if I don't know what he's proposing.
Well, it's hard to read. Yes. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, where the red lettering is to, the big yellow area in the middle, he writes area to be designed and it's approximately 11,900 square feet.
So the area from here to here is 152 feet by about 120 feet. After we carved out this part which faces Devon, we will have three weak gas ports facing Devon. That part there will have a roller coaster and here, mini Himalaya on this side.
Oh, sorry.
On this side will have the party room and the top is the entrance. In here will be the trampoline, the big yellow area, all trampoline and kids play. So now the, you know, everyone will come in through the doors from this side and they will travel this way. There'll be a counter here. The counter will receive the customers right here and will, you know, buy tickets for their birthday party. They'll set up the party room and the food will come from the restaurant here. Open, that will supply the food to them. So basically this restaurant concept here will be part of the.
It would be an open concept, not segmented.
No, this won't be this whole thing from here to there. It'll have an access to provide the food to the place.
And then what is the space to the left of the restaurant then?
Liquor store.
Arminetti's.
And the hookah, hookah, hookah?
All the way back to the alley. So this is Devon here and this is going to be made for storefronts where it's solid brick wall now.
So the proposal that was in our packet to begin with had not included a children's play area and instead had been changed to a resale clothing option.
Well, there's three options. One family center, which is the children play around, and one is either family, you know, clothing or a banquet. So I just heard, this is kind of what I am really geared toward right now is the family center.
Which was that what you had originally spoken to us and also the EDC, Economic Development Commission, when you came to speak with us originally?
Yes.
That was what we were.
I didn't really zero down on that and I have not really zeroed down on that particular move until, you know, further, you know, moving more toward making the final deal. But this is one of the most attractive ideas that I think that will work in this area because after studying demographics around, there's a high percentage of children between the age of one to 12 and that's what is this, you know, family center is for that age group.
I have a question I'd like to ask you also. If, how many businesses do we currently have in the mall, in the shopping center? About?
About 22 stores.
About 22 stores. If you, the concern I have or the question I have is if we change the name of the, of the strip shopping center, all those businesses will have to redo all their advertising, all the business cards. Will the addresses change? Will they still be known as Bartlett Plaza?
Let me go back there.
First, Mayor Christmas, this is my son Jeremy.
How you guys doing?
My name is Manny Rafidia. Jeremy just got out of school about three years ago and went into the insurance industry and came home and finally said, I want to join the family business. I want to do what you did, Dad. And I got him involved with me and this is kind of internship for him to learn and everything. But answering the question, I really don't have a definite answer. I gotta, I'm going to consult with every business in the shopping center and ask the consultant and move forward with that idea. But I just wanted to put it, you know, upfront that this is something that I would like to do in the future.
Yeah. I'm just thinking about if you do change the name and they have to redo all their advertising, business cards and whatnot, some of these people have publications, you know, papers and whatnot, you know, that I'm wondering what the burden would be on those businesses financially.
I tell you, I never done something changing the name, but due to the, like, the Asian of this property, you know, with the new look and remodeling, I thought of coming up with a new name, coming out of the box and just coming with something different and new, sounding like we're, you know, we're downtown Chicago or we're downtown Arlington Heights. That's why I thought that a name would be a cool name to use.
No, I understand the reasoning behind it. I do, you know, but I just had a question or concern about the financial burden it would be on the existing businesses that live there. And, you know, we've known that as Bartlett Plaza, Gorski Plaza ever since we moved here. And, you know, I think that some consideration should be given to maybe maintaining the current.
I absolutely agree with you, especially, you know, there could be some clauses in these leases that prevent us from doing that and we have to do some negotiation to work these things with the, you know, business owners. But by no means we're going to just come in and say like, we're changing the name, take it or leave it. It's not our style to do business. We really will talk and become partners with everybody as we, you know, develop this property.
Maybe the Streets of Bartlett Plaza.
There you go.
Good name.
What would be your timeframe?
I'm sorry?
What would be your timeframe?
I'm planning to finish this project by the end of summer.
The end of summer?
For 2019.
By the end of this summer?
2019, yeah. Not saying that I'll have it all fully occupied, but definitely fully remodeled.
And what is your vision on the outlot being a grocery store?
Well, right now, the grocer that I'm talking to telling me, get a hold of the property, then we'll get, we'll start talking. So until you don't, until you have that property in your hand, we cannot commit to anything. They're looking for a land lease and they have the number for the land lease and they want to put up 20,000 square feet building as a national grocer.
Well, I can tell you that, and I think that the entire board will agree with me on this, is that the residents in this community are desperately requesting that a grocery store be, be in this village, another grocery store be in this village.
Well, it's an asset. It's an asset to the landlord, to the community, to everybody. I mean, any property that has an anchor, national grocer, it proves the value of that property tremendously. Definitely, yes. And I'm going to pursue that. This is actually one of my goals is to pursue that grocer very, very hard for whatever price it takes.
So with that said, why would you be discussing then building, an outlot building and not putting a grocer in the space that's already built as a grocery store if that is your, indeed your priority and to create that anchor, which we know will draw people to?
Well, this is that, you know, this is a good question and would be very economically feasible had they would want to do that, but they want to lease the land and put their own freestanding building.
If I could interrupt if I may, one of the grocers that we've spoken to for probably about two years now would actually be more supportive of this particular layout with that outlot and the square footage and building a new than it would be of going into that particular store that's been vacant. And that particular store that has been vacant for eight years, we've actually showed them quite a few times, haven't really said yes or no, but we do know based on our conversations that they would actually be more attracted to this particular format of the outlot.
And why is that? What is their line of thinking? I'm just curious. I think it's an important discussion.
It's new for one.
I mean, they've indicated to us that part of it would be an ownership issue as well because he, Mr. Rafidia mentioned they would consider a land lease, meaning they would construct their own, kind of consider it a build-to-suit project, similar to some of the industrial projects. They would build it exactly to meet their current prototype and specifications.
Their business model is a 99-year land lease.
Okay.
If I read this correctly, I believe that you have some leases already or tentative leases with?
We have leases contingent upon us.
Contingent upon closing.
Upon closing. The two leases are the Arminetti and the restaurant.
Do you own either one of those or are a part of either one of those businesses?
Yeah, the middle one I'm going to be part of, the Arminetti, no.
What about the small bar and gaming cafe?
Well, that's all going to be in one. That's all like a food court thing. It's going to have all that uses in the same spot.
Seems like there's.
Again, this will be kind of, you know, carved out. It's not visible to the other customers because these gaming parlors like to be privately kind of excluded from the rest of the crowd.
Yeah, well, I've seen that like at Wheaties over here. They have that wall built and a separate door to get in. You can access it from.
Well, yeah, they kind of put like a wall and like a double wall, like when you go into a washroom where you can't see who's on the inside. It's like parallel to each other.
Seems like there's a lot of moving parts to this. Is there going to be multiple public hearings for this or will there be one public hearing?
The special use requests would most likely all go to the plan commission and we could handle that in one meeting. If they need variations, that would be before the zoning board. So yes, there could be multiple.
All right, so this will go to the plan commission?
Absolutely.
And you've got it, buddy.
I just want to make a comment because when I read through the information for tonight, it just had a different tone than I felt like when you first had come to speak to us. And I thought, did I misunderstand or misremember what was discussed at our October 2nd committee meeting? So I went back and looked at the minutes from that meeting and I also reread the minutes from the Economic Development Commission meeting. And I think that what is concerning to me is that in those meetings, you discussed uses such that you discussed mimicking what you had done at other centers. You discussed things such as a family, and you used the word family several times, a family and adult entertainment center which would cater to birthday parties and draw families. I liked that. That felt nice. You also talked about other centers that you had developed where you put in things such as a dentist and a restaurant and things like that. There was no conversation about liquor store, hookah lounge, or a gaming facility in the minutes that I found. And so I kind of felt like the tone of the development had changed from a family center to not so much family center.
Well, first I have to apologize for maybe the tone, though I clearly wanted to make sure, by no means I am here to pressure. I'm just here to work with the board by all means to work this out. I had had meetings with the president and a couple other trustees about these uses already and we kind of laid these uses out before. The Arminetti, the restaurant with the gaming. So we've done that already. On the other hand, the entertainment center, it's the same thing that we talked about before.
Yes, if indeed that is it, but if it becomes a resale clothing store instead of the entertainment, I feel like we're kind of hedging our bets here. Like, we could do this or not? If we're asked to commit taxpayer funding, I think that there's a difference in the need for the community for someplace to bring small children versus a clothing store, a hookah lounge, or a liquor store. That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Well, I accept that. I see where your point and I understand it. I am really very, very geared toward the family center and that's why I elaborated more on this today by sending the layout of, you know, the party room, the dinosaur, the roller coaster, mini Himalaya, and the big play area in the middle. So I am still focusing on the same thing. I'm just saying that I want to keep my options also open in the event that I don't have a solid tenant for it. I will start the project and eventually turn it over and sell it to somebody. And that's my prototype of getting the center to enrich them and make them, you know, come back alive is that I come in as the investor myself on the property and the business do and eventually turn around and sell the business to an operator. I don't know, as I do that 24 hours a day, believe me diligently and in good conscience to serve the community and to also be able to kind of navigate and be profitable, it's, in my mind, the best use for it by now is the family center. And I hope that this will work out as I'm planning. But by no means that the Arminetti, which is outstanding wine shop, 80% of their sales are wine and the rest is liquor and beer, that is a surprise. This was presented about three months ago to, you know, a couple of the members on a different meeting or on, I don't know, what kind of meeting was that classified as?
I think you're talking about the Economic Development Commission meeting perhaps?
No, when we met upstairs.
It was with staff and just the mayor, just the record. There were no additional trustees at that meeting.
Okay. So I brought this up, that's.
Did I hear you say though, you already have the family center portion leased?
No. I'm saying that I am starting that family center with my son Jeremy, who's going to run it with me, hoping that as we grow it and get it going, there'll be a buyer. You've got to understand, President, that I run and operate multiple properties and I'm not in a business to be a retailer, but I'm in a business to help people become retailers and hopefully successful business people. I have a prototype of business that hardly no landlord uses. It's just unique.
Yeah.
That I put in a million dollar into a business, then I find someone to give me a hundred thousand dollar down 10% and tell them, come on, you become the owner. I'll teach you how to run.
I get your whole concept. I'm just, I'm suggesting that the board has a lot more pliability right now for option A, which would be more family-oriented development there than anything else. So I think you.
And you know, to be honest with you, that's where most of my expertise is, is in a restaurant and a family center type of business. So if anything, that would probably be my priority. And it hasn't changed though. The same language that you see on the site there was presented before in a previous meeting. It's the same layout that we had before. We didn't change these wordings from the previous meeting we had.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe it didn't spell out during the discussion. Maybe it didn't spell out during the discussion that these are the possible uses for the grocery store, but it was presented in the layout we gave you.
Is the Arminetti's beverage store, is it a higher-end?
Their business model to a Binnie's.
Okay.
Well, I don't think we want to discourage any type of business that's viable to be profitable, but I can tell you, you're going to have a really difficult time talking the board into getting beta and waiving any fees if the type of atmosphere in that mall is not what the board would be looking for.
Okay.
On behalf of our community and on the families.
Yeah, it'd be tough to spend beta money and waive fees for a resale clothing shop. For me, anyway.
I have not approached the resale shop about this particular center, but I don't think I will even have a space left to accommodate that space. But I don't want to sit here today and says that I will not. So again, my number one priority is a grocer in the front and the family entertainment center. Those are my two priorities because not only that, I mean, they're going to be most viable businesses to the community, also great asset to the center as real estate value.
Sure. Okay.
One last question. Based on your expertise, if all the pieces of the puzzle come together, and you're saying that you could have this build out by the summer of 2019, what would be your expectations of when a grocery store may be there? Just a rough idea, based on your experience and expertise?
You know, I wish I had the magic, you know, to answer the question. I just was, you know, set back when I asked, you know, a couple of times to just come talk to us when you own this property.
Okay.
I'm not ready to talk. So I really don't have a clear answer on that.
Thank you. Mr. President, I have no other questions.
I have no additional questions.
I have one question just popped up. The, what type of restaurant are we going to have in there?
We have a wood fire burning pizza and like a sub. And it's unique. It will not interfere with any traditional pizza in the shopping center or even anywhere else. What we did in Palatine, something similar to it. It's called Portofino's. And people say you just find a new niche that no one else has. It's a new, it's a different, it's if you have a taste to go and eat at the regular Italian, you know, American-style pizza, this is totally different. This is just a unique gourmet type of pizza that will not interfere or take away from other businesses in the shopping center. You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Gabrenia. Thank you for being here.
Oh, thank you very much.
Nice to meet you, Jeremy.
You too.
And I would assume that'll be going to the plan commission for more discussion. Is that right? Next item we have this evening for the committee meeting is under Finance and Golf, Chairman Dany.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item we have this evening is the six-month review of the village's five operating funds. And with that, I'll turn it over to Todd, please.
To you.
Sure.
Yeah, we...
Twenty-five words or less.
Many?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
On each item.
He just used three.
Twenty-five on the general, twenty-five on water and sewer, twenty-five on parking, twenty-five on golf. Go for it, buddy.
Nah, it's all right. He's not going to miss much. All right. So I'm going on?
Yes.
Thank you. As mentioned earlier, this is six months. Halfway through, this is kind of an update where we're at, and then we'll start our budget season and move forward. To start on the general fund, we're talking about just operating funds, general, water, sewer, parking, golf tonight. We'll be looking at what was budgeted, where we're at year to date, percent of the budget that we've used, and then projected where we think we're going to be at. Those are the key figures that we're looking at. As far as revenue goes, it looks like we're going to be slightly over. We budgeted $22,259. We're going to be just $348,000 over is the brackets on the revenue is good, on the expenses is bad. So 348. That's broken down into a few things. The state, after we approved our budget, thinking that they were going to keep it, keep us at the same levels as the prior year with the 10% reduction, they gave us back 5%. So we're going to be about $200,000 over what we budgeted on income tax. That's based on the 5% that they gave us back. Also in that is our transfer tax is up. We had one transfer tax that was $105,000. So that really helps out the budget. Those are some big industrial buildings. Interest income is also up, as you've seen the Fed raise interest rates. One thing, one area that's down, building permits, and that's just from slower activity as far as building. Plus, we did have some incentives, reduced building permits. So that's one area that's down. So as far as expenses go, we're going to be slightly under. Most of that is due to, as you can see, the police department is the furthest under. We've had a number of retirements. And so as police retire, it's top of the range. We bring in officers at the bottom of the range. There's usually a gap, a timing where the position is open. So that's the main reason why the police department is under. So we're expecting to be $188,000 under budget. Overall, if you look over in the left side, we budgeted $1,775,000. We were going to use of the general fund. We're projecting only to use $1,200,000. Now, $1.1 million is the transfer for the police station. So on top of the transfer, we're just going to use a little over $100,000. That's what we're projecting in the general fund. Water fund, the water fund sales are pretty close to where we budgeted, a little bit under. $163,000 under is what we're projecting. As far as expenses go, we're a little bit under on the services to maintain the wells. We've been trying to hold that, hold back as we won't be using those after the connection is made. And our utilities is a little under. We're watching the water agreement with Elgin. That's a big part. That's four and a half, five million dollars a year. So just a little bit, but we should be okay on that. We're showing a projected year-end surplus of two and a half million, but that's going towards the capital projects. It's going towards the part that we took on without receiving loans for. Sewer fund's about the same. Revenue is not quite as dependent on usage, so we're doing good on the sewer. Expenses are pretty close, nothing way over or way under. We're going to be a little over in the chemical supplies, but machinery, maintenance and other maintenance will offset that. Again, the amount of revenue over expenditures is being used for some sewer projects, the, just the rehab, the annual rehab plan, Devon Avenue Engineering and lift station upgrades. Parking fund, we're doing better as far as parking permits. We expanded the parking permits. That's helping us with our revenue a little bit. Golf fund, we're not doing so well on the revenue on the golf. The golf course, that's the golf players, it looks like we're going to be about $168,000 under budgeted. Banquet is also down for a total $214,000. Right now, at this time of the year compared to last year, we're about $123,000 behind on the revenue. Again, that's the golf course and the banquet that's behind. As far as expenditures, so we're keeping our expenditures down to reflect the slower use with the program. So we're expecting to be $98,000 under budget. As far as the, and then our total, $66,000 right now as far as the shortfall from our revenue to our expenditures. Budgeted to clear $50,000, so that's about a hundred and a little over $100,000 swing the other way. The good news is the food and beverage did better in November. They're picking up their bookings in the spring, so we feel like we're going to have a better spring. And if they golf on Christmas Day, that will bring in a little extra.
No pressure.
So, yeah, if that's it for winter, then we're good. But anyway, that is the quick overview of the six-month operating expenses and income. Any questions at this time? I can, we can...
Is this a normal uphill and bell curve on the golf and banquet funding? We'll kick it up in the spring?
I think we're at six-month and we had unseasonable snow, which wiped out two weeks probably, at least. Right, Phil?
We have had really, and I hate to keep talking about weather, but we've had a historically bad weather here.
Any contractors that are working outside would tell you the exact same thing.
Yeah.
Ever since about October, it's had this monotonous weather, the worst of the
greatest, but not from a weekly standpoint.
What time are you guys going to be open on Christmas?
What time do you like to come by? Are you coming out at the label?
Yeah, by 5:30 a.m.
Speaking of water, Dan, any update on, I know that the reason why we have a surplus there is because of our strategic, how we strategically increase the rates to pick up that amount and also cover the cost of the new water once it does get here, so it wasn't all at once. So I think that's, have we got a lot of calls about the water increases?
We get a lot, but it's not as, it's not as much. We do have one more to go. We already passed those rates, but it will, May is will be our final one, final projected one. But it's, yeah, it's, rates have gone up.
I'm hoping that from a public relations standpoint, we're really stressing the fact that we did not raise water rates for six years, I think, five or six years.
Yes, Mayor.
And the counterbalance, I'm looking at my bill and I know the counterbalance of every time I get those two or three bags of yellow salt and the amount that it takes to run my water softener should be fairly equal once the dust settles. So I'm hoping you were using those type talking points when we're discussing that with residents.
Absolutely, we do. And we really try to direct people, if they want more information, to the website page that has all that information, both the historical information, how that rate was devised, the plan for the three years so that it didn't hit all at once, then, and we were playing catch-up from five years of doing nothing with rates. We certainly try and stress all those points, Mayor.
Good.
One of the things that I hear quite a bit is people, regardless of what we put in writing, they don't read it, okay? They just want to complain about the water rates. And in reality, we didn't have any choice. The contract with Elgin was expiring.
Yeah.
So we had to either go with Elgin or cut, or work a deal the way we did. And consequently, we're paying six cents per 1,000 gallons of water more now to have Lake Michigan water. We don't have to worry about an algae bloom. We don't have to worry about anything with Fox River to go with Lake Michigan water. And we didn't cut the deal with the city of Chicago. So, I mean, we didn't have a choice.
How about timing, Mr. Dany?
We are moving along.
They're going to hold you to anything.
Our goal is May 15th at this point. That's when the contract with Elgin expires. So we're on target for that right now. If you come out to Public Works, it looks a lot different this week. They actually put the framing up for the receiving station, so it's really starting to look like a building. They form, they're forming for the Western, the first storage tank that'll be getting poured shortly. And they are formed up for the metering station floor, which should be poured on Thursday. They're moving along on that. If you've been on Sterns, you've probably had the pleasure of the traffic control going on there. They're at Prospect in Sterns right now. They've been working well with the school and trying to time it to get it done once school, once the children are in school. And then they try to get it opened up for the kids to get out of school. So we've been working with them closely and trying to keep them. The police department's been very helpful adjusting to traffic signals and all that stuff. If you've been by Apple Orchard, they're installing the 16-inch directional drilling by Apple Orchard Golf Course. That's going well. And you've probably, if you've been on 20 over by Villa Olivia, the main is all in except for the piece under Lake Street. And they dug the boring pits. They're getting ready to auger under that. So we'll be done with that one fairly soon as well. So it's moving along well.
Fantastic. Does anyone else have any questions for budget review?
No.
All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive...
Yeah, I just, I was remiss earlier. I, the article that you have here, I cut it out Daily Herald yesterday, and I just want to give you a copy on solar energy. And I asked Brian just to say a few words about what our village is doing. So it's a matter of record, solar energy.
The village is going through a soul smart designation community. It's a little bit of a lengthy process, but we will, we will meet the designation by next, you know, in the next few months. So it actually streamlines the permit process and all the information is available on our website. And it's real easy to submit for application and our turnaround time is always quick. So it's going well. We've had probably eight applications within the last month.
Good. Thank you. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
By trustee Camer.
The motion has to include that it's for imminent litigation.
To discuss pending or imminent litigation pursuant to Section 2C11 of the Open Meetings Act. Moved by trustee Camer, seconded by trustee Dany. We'll quickly start the roll.
Trustee Camer?
Yes.
Cabranero?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Gabrenia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Absent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We are adjourned to executive session.